I call the public session to order. And will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so changes to the agenda.
I would like to propose the addition of the nominations of nominations of Laura Hilton, Student Services Admin Assistant, effective July 6, 2021, and Sarah Snow, Pre-K Special Education Teacher, effective August 23, 2021, as well as removal from the agenda of Gloria Calalainen, the J R M S I L C Instructional Associate Higher. And I would like to also make the addition of the S A U 47 Districtwide Director's Contract, adopting June 21st, 2021.
Okay. All right, thank you for the motion. Do I have a second? So, Alicia, thank you. And all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Opposed, abstain, all right, so that's changed. Thank you. Okay, so first up, public comments. If anyone has something that they want to comment on related to the agenda. Thank you for showing the policy that guides this.
So yeah, as always, if you would like to make a public comment digitally, feel free to do so by raising your hand at the bottom of your screen. Please know, you know, again, we do have our policy up, so make sure you give that a read and make sure that you're in compliance with that. Again, I think some of the big items is, you know, stating your name in town residents, being a Jaffrey or Ridge resident, keeping it to agenda items and no personal attacks.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Is, I think that the shouldn't say that thing, the board offers its compliments and well done to all the people who participated in all of the events of the last week in terms of setting them up, in terms of streaming, in terms of taking them down. We've got a lot of effort was put into that and a lot of people who don't get recognition, okay, really performed well, so I just want to offer my compliments and compliments to the board to everyone involved which doing the step up, fifth grade step up for R M S and J G S and for the awards, the middle school eighth grade step up and the high school graduation.
That is really nice, having events outside the weather cooperated so that we could do it, it was great. So thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, very good point, man. I know I very much agree, I'm sure we all, so. Thank you, Charlie.
All right, the only comment that we have is a chat comment that was sent to me, I'll just read it out loud real quick. It's Ann Wheeler of Jaffrey. She said, I would like to thank the district for live streaming all events last week, I hope this continues in the future. So just kind of a reiteration of, you know, many of things the board said.
And I'd like to thank Atlas Power Vision because that was one of the longest graduation fireworks this lady's ever, I think, and our learners really appreciated being recognized for that.
Yeah, at that time. That was really nice. Some of the townspeople who were new to the area were unaware. Did the factory blow up? No, no, just graduation. Welcome to Jaffrey. All right, great, so let's move on then, and it's superintendent's report.
Right, so we already talked about the fact that last week was amazing, really, was great to, one, have a final week of school this year. And I think that everyone's pleased with that and just pleased about how the school year ended. And the celebrations that each place had were, I think, really well put together, again. It's already been mentioned, but, and, and you know, summed it up, you know, there were a lot of people who appreciated the live streaming and the sound quality and everything that we did this year to put that together and Nick did a great job along with Mike. There's so many people behind the scenes did a lot of setup and it wasn't the easiest of things and there was a lot of trial and error to make it, make it work and I just, I'm so proud of everyone who was involved. And I think that if I could recall some numbers, I think that there were like 90 people live streaming at one point for the eighth grade graduation, there were another 30 to 40 at each of the J G S and the award ceremony. That was happening simultaneously, by the way, so we were live streaming to the same time. And then quite a few, maybe like 70 or so for the additional, for the high school graduation, which did have that spectacular summation, which was caught me off guard. And the timing was impeccable for them just to go right into that very long and very well done show, and the way it was just, just to have everyone seated for that entire time was just really nice. That we weren't going outside of a building and then kind of there was side, there was, you know, there were fireworks kind of off to the side and some people watching and that, it was just, we did it together. And I think that summarizes what we did this year, and so we did it together. You know, there weren't, it wasn't, not everything was easy. We didn't always agree on everything through this course of year, there was conflict, there was difficulty, there were people who had, you know, every, there were so many viewpoints, but in the end, you know, our families and our kids need to be complimented for what they did this year. Our staff, our teaching staff, you know, having to plan and go from remote to in person and back and forth a few times and to make sure that their Google classrooms were all set up so that they could switch when they needed. Those individuals, I talked to a couple today, teachers who were remote all year long with first graders, kindergartners, you know, first and second graders, that's, that's a lot and they did really well. And there's a lot of evidence to show there, they were so planned and you have to be overplanned when you're doing things of that nature from a digital standpoint. Our custodians, our instructional associates, just everyone did such a great job. And a shout out to our custodians and our maintenance crew because that was such a hot, a heavy theme of the year, keeping things clean constantly, keeping things disinfected. Now, we purchased a lot of extra equipment to make sure that that could happen. And keeping things going, keeping the, you know, the filters changed all the time. There just was a lot of attention to detail and so I want to really thank them as well. I'm very proud, honestly, have, I'm, this is the proudest I've been as a superintendent of the school district with the efforts that everyone gave this year. Again, it wasn't easy. No, no one had it, but we accomplished great things. Later in July, or the early part of July, we'll have our, we'll start our administrative retreat. That's two out of the three or four days that we took, that we have, and we wanted, we figure we split it up, get a couple of days of very solid planning time to continue the efforts that we've been working on and fine tune some of the planning documents that we've had. We, I do anticipate that we'll have a couple new administrators there during that timeframe. With any, with any fortune, it would, I mean, it might be tough to get a new assistant principal in the middle school, high school by that time, but it is possible. And certainly we'll have a new director of guidance over at the middle school, high school, and that's very exciting. And I, it's exciting when we have new people who provide different types of views and experiences and haven't been part of that process yet, but can kind of, sometimes processes of planning can get mundane. And then you have these new people who are like, oh wow, that's amazing, we've been trying to do that for a long time, what if we did? And it comes together, and so, again, the group is always smarter than the individual, so getting that collaboration together is important. H V A C update, we've been talking about this quite a bit. Started off excited about the work that we wanted to get done and then kind of disappointed because of the regulations that the federal government placed, or at least the interpretation of the regulations that the federal government placed upon the use of funds with construction. A few of the districts, Summersworth, I think, really led the way, but, you know, as part of it, as well as a couple other districts who wanted to get some of this work done. Talked to Shaheen's office, got to let it, they wrote a letter, it was a really nice letter that they sent to the U S Department of Education. U S Department of Education came back and communicated with the New Hampshire Department of Education. And so, things have started to move again, and as of today, I know that the company that we are working with has provided all their plans to the Department of Education. We have a couple of things on our ends relative to making sure that we have an outside person approving the cost structure and so forth as well, but it would appear that we'll be able to move forward. About a month later than we would have liked to have started this process and the procurement of items, so the likely end time of this project is going to shift, but nonetheless, it will get done within the course of a year. Most likely, with I'm sure some tweaks in the years to come, as it typically is when you have new construction or adjustments, renovations. So exciting things going on, we have people working on that and just continuing checking in and writing the grants, ready to write the grants and submit them when, when they come. Later on tonight, you will be looking at a revised or a new, I guess you could say, opening framework for this coming year that will hopefully have a vote on tonight, provided to the Department of Education. Once that happens, first and foremost, we have a deadline, it needs to happen by a certain time, but also as incentives, in a, in a sense, from the Department of Ed, they released the last third of the S R three funds to the districts. So it's, it's kind of a trade. So, that's the report for tonight.
All right, thank you very much, are there any questions or comments for Ruben? Okay. All right, moving on then, consent agenda. We've had a change to consent agenda, so just keeping that in mind, I need a motion.
I'm willing to accept the consent agenda as amended.
All right, thank you, John. Second?
Second.
Patty, thank you. And all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain? Okay, 7-0-0, thank you. Um, action items. Speak of the framework, there it is.
So the 2021, 22 reopening framework, let me first say I am really grateful to our communication coordinator, who was doing double duty right now, you know, sometimes for the goal was for him to facilitate the conversation and from the individuals who have called us from the community as well as from a couple staff members, I don't remember if they were teachers or other staff members, who had thanked him, they went actually directly to Nick and thanked him for being able, they felt like they could speak freely and without judgment. That was our goal this time around, to make sure that that took place. There was a smaller group of people, so I do think that a lot of people could talk effectively during the timeframe. We were fortunate, I was not part of that, I took, I was originally going to be, I gave my spot over to one of the elementary nurses because we felt that we needed to have that perspective from both the secondary and the elementary as well. And so we had about 15 to 16 individuals who were on that, most from the original group, some additions or changes. So in a nutshell, basically, Nick had put together a presentation for that group that showed a lot of the survey data from both the 140 or so people who work in our school district who took the survey, plus the several hundred families that took the survey as well. And so the information in that survey data, much of it is put into this framework, it's there for you to see. The majority of both groups said they would like to start off this year with relatively normal, that's the summary of it. There was some difference between the two, there were some differences between the two groups once if, if the data were to change and we were to have some spikes and so forth, exactly. The, the family still would prefer to have it a little more normal. And staff started to move a little more evenly, but a little more in the direction toward, you know, wanting to have some items in place that were similar to what we had this year with our protocols. The benefit of this, the approach we've taken with framework and not everyone enjoys the continuous looking at it and the changing and so forth based upon data, but we knew early on that this was going to be something that we're going to continuously learn about, the data was going to shift and we're going to get different types of information on a regular basis, so it was important that we shifted and we found out that that really, although perhaps obnoxious at sometimes, it gave us, it made sure that we were always focusing on what we needed to do in the best way possible. With the right information that we had. So here, we are at a spot where, yeah, the C D C and D P H S more and more, certainly, you know, states are opening and more and more their idea is being pushed forward to do away with the masks, they're no, they're, you know, you can go into grocery stores now, they don't have the signs up saying, you know, they're, they're recommended still perhaps, but not required. The numbers have been going down in our region. Sometimes they've been staying flat, but we're in the green. And that's a good place to be, certainly we want to see how the numbers continue to either decrease, stay the same, or increase throughout the course of the summer. That makes a difference. So when we look at this framework right here, this is like, this is what we believe based upon the trending information we have right now that we would like to do. And that is basically going back to the typical situation, we're not proposing to have a separate digital learning experience. We can, at a later time, talk about snow days and what we'd like to do, we do have a handbook that talks about that, that can be re-upped and then, but we can do that later on. It's not necessary that we talk about that right now. Excuse me, the there was an area here, as I was reading through the framework the other day and had questions on things, there was, it is my understanding that there was some conversation around the visitors or volunteers within the school, and so there was some conversation about should those individuals, they're not really part of the system all the time necessarily, some are, some are there a lot longer day after day, but should they be required to wear masks, should they not be required and so forth? So when we looked at that, and there were several people who gave feedback, thought that it looked awkward to require them to wear masks when no one else was required to do so. Maybe it was because of the, you know, the idea of the segregating one group over the other and so forth, and there is another school district now that's kind of under fire based upon some of their strategies to separate unvaccinated and vaccinated learners, you know, about a half a month ago or so, so it'll be interesting to see how that goes as that saga continues. You know, one thought I had was, if that was a direction that we wanted to go, do we say, you know, wear a mask unless you're you, you're immunized, you know, can we even do that? Are we going to be asking people, you know, for that data and that information? And so I think that overall, in the majority of, of comments, we're just not having the masks, that if we have people coming in for volunteers or for visitors, I think that we still limit visitors, I think that's not a bad idea, there's no reason to have people running all over the campus for certain, and I think that for safety purposes in general, we should limit visitors. But to allow our volunteers, substitutes and so forth to come in and not have to wear a mask. I will also say that some, a lot of our volunteers or people who are doing things after school volunteering are from F P U, Franklin Pierce University. It is my understanding that Franklin Pierce University has mandated that anyone coming back on campus is vaccinated, so that is a benefit to us. I think that's important to note, King State, we do have some of their students, sometimes I don't have, I don't have any update as to what they're asking for or of their student, their students right now, so we'll keep you updated to that. And since we're developing bigger partnerships with F P U, this, you know, that's going to be helpful. And I think that helps our teachers feel at ease as well and our support staff as well, who are working hand in hand with these individuals fairly closely. The I mean, you've seen this, it's, it's, it's been out there for a few days, read it over. You know, there was some language that we had kind of thought that we might like to have a little bit of a change on, just for clarification. There's a three feet piece, there was a conversation about social distancing. And so there was, should we have social distancing or should we not have social distancing? It is my understanding that the conversation was that some individuals preferred that we we put the three feet of social distancing in there as, let's plan for the beginning of the year, the school year, so I'm talking about the fall right now. I'm not talking about summertime necessarily, but the fall. Let's, let's have a number or a kind of a concrete piece of information that teachers can plan their classroom for, so it's easier for what we, what the conversation went for a teacher to say, oh, I've planned my units or I planned my lessons. If, if, let's say I'm doing a science class and I planned my, my science experiments and I need to make sure that I'm doing that in a way where students are socially distanced by three feet, that's very different than saying, oh, we're going to plan our everything as though everything's normal and then suddenly maybe have to go to three feet of social distancing because there's an uptick in cases or something that, like, like that happening. So you know, the school board could certainly say, no, let's start off with no social distancing and then add it if we need to. As of right now, it would be written as, let's put it in place as what we're expecting to do and have the team come back mid to maybe early August, mid, I was going to say midsummer, but early to mid-August and look at all the information, look at the data, see if that's necessary. And then come back to the board if there's a problem, so there is, there was agreement with the group to come back in the summertime to relook at information. But, once again, because people are planning as early as, you know, the beginning of July, just to have a concept of what would be, what it would likely be in a worst case scenario, so that's in there, that being said, I don't wa, I don't think we want language in there that's going to handcuff people during the summertime program, E S Y, trying to make sure that kids are constantly, who are coming for learning needs that they're, there, there's so few of them in comparison that I don't think that's a necessary thing to do, especially with the numbers where things are at and the fact that we haven't had a case of any kind since we basically went five days a week. And because of, especially because E S Y has a lot to, you know, is, we have many of our most our learners who are in most need and also perhaps have some difficulty with some social, depending on why they're there for E S Y. To not have to have the strict regulations like that would be helpful, I think the flexibility would be very helpful for the special education department. So that is my summary of this, it's about half the size of our 2020 2021 reopening framework, there was a lot, you know, there were a lot more restrictions in that one. Certainly, we have that framework to fall back on if things were to change in a direction that we certainly don't want to see and be able to reinstate that as we go along, the board has that power to do that.
All right, are there any questions or comments about this, Charlie?
Yeah, just a couple of things, one is starting on page 11, we have survey results. And it would help if we put labels rather than numbers underneath the responses. Because I don't know what a one is and what a five is, so.
Nick, you have a comment there?
Yeah, if you read the paragraph right here.
One says, one set of questions looked generally at.
Yeah, just in an effort to not kind of muddy up the survey itself, I tried to explain it there. If you'd like a more in-depth or to have it a different way, I'm more than happy to do it, I just figured instead of cramming a bunch of text, it might be better to separate it.
Well, from my perspective, I think it would be very helpful to do that. Okay, simply saying that it, the five is all whatever it is you have.
All safety precautions.
We have never, if data process, D C increases, in other words, students wear masks on page 13. I find that to be very self-explanatory.
I tend to agree with that too, I think people tend to go to the pictures to try and explanation, so.
Would it be fine to put the language of no safety precautions or mitigation strategies underneath one side where the one is, then have the opposite end over there and just have a spectrum as opposed to all the in-betweens?
Sure, that works for me, just so you know what direction you're going in, for sure, he's at first glance.
Particularly as people are looking at this over the course of the summer and far more likely to look at it in August. These are small tweaks that, once this is approved, or I also, I had to read a sentence over and over and I can't find it now, of course, but it reflects that a family is one unit. I, I think, and so it's certain number of family responses, but a family is a unit versus students, number of students within a family, so one family would get one vote, so to speak, or one entry versus if you had multiple children in the district, you had multiple entries. I think that's what was explained, or at least I think that was what it meant, but I don't know where I found that, so I apologize.
And also, I know we have some concern about vaccinated versus unvaccinated. But the projection for the fall is a surge of the Delta variant among unvaccinated people.
Right.
And so one of the things we want, might want this group to look at is what kind of response we're going to have if we have a surge among unvaccinated people, how we would handle that.
That what-if scenario?
I'm sorry?
Oh, that what-if scenario?
Yes.
Yeah.
My reference was on page four, I'm sorry, and it is a clear sentence, it's just maybe it's the word representing, but one submission by each family, I don't know.
I can look at it and clear it up.
Semantics, I'm sorry.
What page did you say that was on?
I have it on page four, the, the paragraph that starts in total, kind of, we received. It's not that it's not right, it's just that it's one server representing one.
It's in the creation of the plan.
I have on page three, but the fourth page.
The fourth page of the document, the actual numbered page.
Yep.
Again, I don't mean to be a pessimist.
Not clarity.
And by staff, you mean staff and faculty, like it's staff, faculty administrators, all staff. We didn't delineate.
There was no.
Anonymous, we don't know what.
We, we could disaggregate if we need to with, with category, but no, it was sent to all.
Okay.
Employees.
All district.
Yeah, it was sent to all employees, but we at least have a delineation of what school the person represents and what their position was. So there's certainly a lot more data work that we could do over the summer. The goal here was to just at least get some basic representation and, you know, for the deadline.
We reference staff sometimes as staff and then faculty differently than administrator. So the word staff actually might be maybe employees.
Yeah, it is a mix. It is not one specific.
John.
I, I just want to say that I really liked the introduction. I think it really sets the stage for what this framework proposes to do. You know, getting input from our community, including our staff is really important. But the fact that we're following the science and the recommendations coming out of the state agencies gives us the ability to use survey data and rely on it because we're working within science and and I, and I like the way that you, you know, lay out if the recommendations change, certainly if the Department of Public Health or the state of New Hampshire comes back with new guidance, we're going to take that into account.
Anything else?
And yeah, just to reiterate a point that Ruben made, the committee that is listed in the framework has agreed to meet over the summer. So much like with the last plan, it doesn't mean that we've agreed to this now and it can't change. You know, our last framework, I think, had four to five different pages of changes that we made just, you know, throughout the year. So the idea that this, you know, something that could change and evolve as we go on. So we, we can definitely look at both the tweaks and language to fine tune things and also should recommendations have to change, we could work on those as well.
I have a question. And I'm trying to formulate it in my head, but how do we know when we're done? With all of this, how do we know when we're done with COVID? Do we have a, a point at which we just put it behind us in terms of reopening, in terms of social distancing? How do we, as a school district, know that the emergency is over and we're completely back to normal? Do we have any way to calculate that? I know we're not there and I anticipate that there will be spikes. I'm just wondering what it looks like for us and how we make that announcement. We're done. How do we do that?
Well, can I, can I respond just real quick? What you're calling to mind is the year before COVID, a, a number of schools in New Hampshire and New England had to actually close for a few weeks due to influenza. Something that's been around for a hundred years because they didn't have the staff because the flu got so bad. Was not COVID at all, but we're not done with it. And so I don't know that there would ever be an announcement. I think we're going to need vaccinations. We're going to need, you know, the public to be aware, we're going to need science, but I don't see that there would be a announcement because I mean, things just happen, you know?
Not quite like smallpox.
So there are two things. One, to add on to what Lisa just said, we put some language in here that would allow us in the case of other illness.
Yeah.
Like what the influenza, what you just talked about with the flu. To be able to say, let's mask up for a, a week or two, you know, and be done just to, you know, art. One thing we found out, and we have, again, without reiterating all the conversations we had this year and the concerns and so forth. The, the people who had the least amount of problem with these masks were our learners. The matter of fact, when we told them that they could take them off outside, if you walked outside into the courtyard to see the middle school people playing, you know, fifty percent, the majority of them would continue to wear their masks all the way up to the end of there. So there, there was not enormous discomfort and couldn't wear it and couldn't breathe and so forth, became a little more normal. Adults, I think, had more difficulty. But the other piece is to answer your, your question more directly. I think we have to keep on following the guidance from the state. You know, our it's been a little up and down here and there with the, the governor and saying it's a local thing and then taking over and it's, you know, it caused us a little bit of difficulty as we maneuver, but we're okay. And and then also the Department of Education and what their requirements are. Now, it's important to note that we're federally, like when we see federal funds, we have received and accepted the S R one funds, two and three, and those funds, the three funds, anyway, I don't think are due to be to go away in a sense like we can use them all the way till, I think, the end of two thousand twenty-three, maybe September of two thousand twenty-three. And so I would imagine as long as we are able to use those funds, they're going to have us making certain that we have some sort of a real framework. Yeah. There's, there's just stipulations to receiving that type of funding.
Nick.
Just to point out something that the, a couple of committee members had said during our discussion, which I found kind of interesting is this. This idea of not necessarily having COVID be the new normal for one, you know, this acknowledgement that we perhaps could reach a period where we can start, you know, laxing up and maybe, you know, doing things a little bit more normally, but also this idea. I think the exact wording was putting COVID in its place and getting to a certain point where through vaccinations and some of these other things, we can start treating it like other illnesses and, you know, maybe acknowledging that it never does truly go away. But also just this idea that we have these strategies, you know, mitigation strategies and things like that. Should we have outbreaks? Should we have issues just like with the fluids and these other things that we just start incorporating, you know, this idea of just looking at cleaning and looking at, you know, even basic things like hand washing and just how can we be more safe? How can we be more healthy in the school setting so that we're not just protecting against things like COVID, but other illnesses as well? And then just kind of being able to move on in a way where we're not just saying it's completely over, you know, we're never going to have to deal with COVID again. You know, just be mindful and continuing to, you know, kind of evolve and adapt as things come our way. So I think that was a big kind of takeaway for me that I was kind of hearing through the committee the night that we met.
All right. Um. Usually when we do a big thing like this, we give an opportunity, an extra little public comment if anyone has anything they want to comment on the reopening framework before we vote. So do you want to?
So this is the second public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. On this specific.
On this specific. So if anyone hasn't.
So just to be clear, we're opening up public comments again to anybody who would like to speak on specifically the reopening framework. Again, feel free to use the hand raise feature, first and last name. And then just to observe our, but the public comment policy backup. So we will officially open up the public comment section again. All right, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. Thanks. All right. So I guess.
I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty-one, twenty-two reopening framework.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Second.
I'll second.
Alicia, thank you. And all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Carrie seven zero zero. Thank you. Um, all right. Next action item, transfer of funds.
So this is the ongoing work that we've been planning for the summertime for the RMS and JRM, CHS parking lots. Specifically, the majority, what we're asking for, and you made a similar motion the, the last time or maybe two times ago, where it was going to be an amount on the very bottom, a very amount not to exceed around six hundred, I think it was sixty-five thousand dollars around there. We're asking for an increase with a change order of close to ninety thousand dollars. Over fifty thousand of that, which is to get the work done as they're doing the paving or, you know, prior to doing that really to get set up for the three-phase electricity over at RMS. Most of this is all RMS related and range, less of it is at, at the school. The three-phase electricity is RMS has, does not have very good, a very good electrical structure there. This is going to bring it up to speed and it's going to bring up the speed in such a way that's going to allow for the HVAC improvements to occur. Now, these HVAC improvements are, were in the original conversation with EEI. But because we're, we're not, we're, we're doing things later than we had wanted to. Now it becomes, this work is going to get done like starting tomorrow, like we're going to start doing paving, like we're not waiting at all. And we don't want to redo this process. So the nice thing here is that we're asking for that money to come out of the building maintenance reserve trust fund. And then that, that would free up some funds to perhaps do more with the HVAC within the S R funds that we would have. So fifty-three or sixty thousand dollars of that in, in theory. Whatever that number was that Mike from EEI had for the three-phase electrical work. It has to be done anyway. If we're going to go forward, it's better to be done right off the bat and not to have to redo it. And this is something, once we do it, gets taken off the plate of another scope of work. So maybe we can look at other aspects of that, of that sort of scope of work to make sure that we can get the most we can in our HVAC work. So we have the funds. You can see that by doing this, you'd be left with just shy of twenty thousand dollars in the trust. There it, you know, in the end, it might not cost that. So we could end up with maybe, you know, thirty thousand left in the trust, but we wanted to kind of put a worst case scenario there.
A question? I don't have a question about the transfer of funds. I have a question about after this is done, I have a comment of a question about this. Just one, one comment. We, we learned about this this morning, or at least I did. Some people may have known about it earlier, but it, it seems to make sense. And for one reason, we are hoping to replace the Aon air handling machines on the middle school, which will include dehumidification if there's sufficient money left over. This move should help us in that regard because we're making a fifty thousand dollar expenditure that would have come out of S R funds. Now hopefully that fifty thousand will make it more likely we can replace the air handlers up in the middle school. And that's going to be important because the middle school, especially in the top floors are very, very difficult environments at this point. So.
And HVAC or not, this is because we're going to need the electricity for lighting. That's, that's in this right here, the scope for, you know, a little bit lesser so for signs that we want to put into the schools as well. And just, I mean, even today, we're over there and it was an electrical issue which was causing the pumps not to work in the sewage area. So it very well, it's all fine. We're all, you know, every, the breakers were tripped and so forth and all that. So it's all fixed and everything was fine and there were no emergencies. That being said, you know, the fact when they compared what RMS had for infrastructure to what the other schools had for infrastructure, RMS was lacking and it's something that needs to be done anyway.
Yeah. And.
So it's, apart from HVAC, it just happened to be that we couldn't do any HVAC work without it being done.
All right. Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that we transfer eighty eight thousand eight hundred five dollars. As of over, we're looking here to, or I'll read it from the bottom of that.
Yeah.
Right.
I get it. I, I would like to, uh, uh, make a motion that we recommend, that we moved authorized expenditure in the amount not to exceed. Is that right? Seven hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars from the building maintenance trust fund and approved the change order to net construction in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Bring the contract total to eight hundred and forty thousand, three eighty-eight, seventy cents.
Where did this?
Thank you for writing it out.
Uh, I need a second. Thank you, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Carrie seven zero zero.
I'd just like to commend the thinking project management wise across the board, that electrical pavement and just all the pieces were looked at and essentially said whether it was, I missed this meeting this morning, but whether it seems very late in the game, it's terrific that it can be done and we have full facility to do it, to be nimble enough to do it. And I'm grateful that we have that. Thank you to John and others for seeing it for the big picture.
Hi, Charlie.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the board that probably next month, we will be discussing retained funds. And we need to keep in mind that we've only got twenty K in the building maintenance reserve trust fund. And that's for the entire year. Then we can't put anything more back in there until next March. And that's if the taxpayers allow us to do it. So it's important that we keep that rainy day fund up to a, a level that can afford any kind of emergency during the year.
Thank you. Okay. Um, work to policies, the two policies.
Unless there are any questions on the policies, I would like to waive the second reading on the policies. And the reason for that is the policies are to support the approved changes that we made in the purchasing guidelines and are also straight from the federal guidelines relative to federal funding of projects.
None of the policies are not policies that we've had before and they are necessary.
I'll second Charlie's recommendation. We need to.
All right.
To waive the second reading.
That was a motion that you made to waive the.
Yes, it was motion to waive the second.
And Alicia seconded. Is there any discussion further on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Seven zero zero. Thank you. Board committee updates?
Do we need to actually approve the polit, do we approve the policies and waive the reading on one?
Oh, that's right.
Motion.
Sorry, I was thinking. It was just the waving of the second.
I'll make a motion to accept, approve the policies.
All right. Thank you, Alicia. Second. Patty, thank you. Alright, thank you, Alicia. Second. Patty, thank you. So excited. Okay. Is there any discussion about the actual policies? And again, as Charlie said, it's to go along with something that we've already approved and it also follows the federal. Okay. Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining? Seven zero zero. Now we can move on to committees.
I can start.
Okay.
So policy, Matt, we still have some policies that are in the works. And due to schedules for several of the policy committee members, we will not be meeting on Thursday. So we are going to be doing some follow-up by email.
Um, we were supposed to meet in terms of the finance, but Charlie, go ahead and speak that we.
We didn't have anything urgent.
Right. A lot of the things happen.
So we opted to defer our finance meeting until next month.
And is that the only committee meetings that were scheduled to meet?
Facilities.
Facilities, Matt, okay.
We, we met the facilities, met this morning for about an hour and a half. John had quite a few items for us. John looked better. We did go through the topic that Ruben updated us on regarding the federal and then the state approval of the funds. John was a little bit less optimistic than Ruben, but hopefully Ruben's got the more recent data. Not that John said it wasn't going to happen, but he was going to wait to see because it is getting late. But John updated us on the facilities garage, which is coming along. There's still things to be done there. There's a sinkhole that's developed over at the grade school and a contractor has hired J D K paving, excavating to dig out the sinkhole. And it's, it's, it looks like it's quite a big sinkhole. There's some drainage issues going on over there. So there's going to be investigatory work to see how that basically a catch basin that's collapsed and how it can be filled in. The Turner Company has been working on, you know, doing a bunch of assessments for our facilities. They've been providing regular updates to John, specific parts of the project. I believe we expect a full report from them sometime this summer. And a number of other items, district painting, carpeting going forward, asbestos training. It's funny to even have to think about this many years after asbestos was identified as a real problem, but since so many of these buildings were built with asbestos, it has to be tracked. It doesn't have to be remediated instantly, but it has to be tracked so that whenever a repair or maintenance is done, you identify that there's asbestos there. So there's a need for training and we've had fallen a little bit behind in that. So we're getting back up to speed on that and followers have been put in at Ridge Memorial School in preparation for some of the other work that's going to be done there. Auto Gate is, has been installed at grade school and there's some other repairs to the to the railings, the fences, I should say, around the property. They're either done or underway. And I guess the last thing I would mention is the, there was a sewage problem for a second time in three weeks at the Ridge Memorial School. And so our consultant was there today trying to figure out what was going on. From what Ruben has just said, it sounds like electricity was part of the problem, Ruben. Is that?
Something that everything had tripped.
Was that the problem the first few times that it happened?
Uh. The first time that we, I don't have as much information about that one time. This one, like every, nothing was working. So I guess there were six different pumps or whatever. And so we thought, I asked, I said, is it just that there's a pump that's overloading everything? And he said, well, it's possible, but probably not possible for six of them to do that. So it's just, there's some other, other electrical source happening. There are, there are some tests that I think they're going to continue to do on the system to see if there are any blockages or, you know, also looking at the leach field as well.
Okay, yeah. Right.
From, if I can, it's not, has kind of to do with that and also the transfer that you approved earlier. When I look at that list and I see $500,000 for the 2021 warrant article, first of all, very appreciative of the taxpayers for voting that through. But I think that it's important to, that the person who opts to that from 350 to 500,000 was a former board member. Laurel, she was, had the wisdom to do that. At first I was like, oh, you know, like, the 350, you know, that's a good number. And, but it would appear that that was necessary. And so to take into account, you know, a lot of things that need to be done and the BS and the then, so I think she deserves a lot of credit for making sure that this project can continue going forward and doing it properly. So. Laurel McKenzie, good job.
Good job here. Alright, thanks. Um, board matters, anything? Alright, um. We have under future, the old technology plan. I don't know if there's any.
Here's your items. See update on all planning.
Okay.
Technology included.
Great.
Yeah.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Excellent. Alright, if then there's nothing else. And I think.
Make a motion.
Alicia, you're making a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second? Second. Thank you, Lisa. Is everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you.